I'll the meeting to order. I'd ask you to join me and rise if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Hold on a second, I just gotta get to that pitch. First item on our agenda is public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak on something not on tonight's agenda is more than welcome to. Seeing no one, then I will move on. Discussion items, reports from school committee members. Go ahead, Jess.
I just wanted to say that I attended the Cooler Fair that was held on Saturday, and I thought the Yes Club and all the other groups did a wonderful job. There was so many crafts and activities for kids to do, it looked like people were having a really good time, so it was a well-done event.
Thank you. I saw you come up, so just a couple of things about public comment. One is that the, I need to point out that the SGA C recently ruled that people have the right to speak in public comment on anything they wish. What they require of the chair is to make things equal. And so what we're gonna do is give three minutes to everybody to speak, and so I'll just end it when the three minutes are up. And I would remind people that it's, public comment is not for things on tonight's agenda, and so we can't comment on questions or things like that. But with that, go right ahead.
I am a Middleborough resident and my children are children. I'm addressing the school committee this evening because my concerns regarding the superintendent committee's position related to a post on Friday, 14th, 24th, where the post was made by a current member of the school committee on their official school committee political page stating, I quote, "If your religion requires you to hate someone, you need a new religion." The member posted this statement as an elected official of the Middleborough School Committee. Coincidentally, this was posted just hours after receiving an email from a concerned parent regarding their religious beliefs. By making this statement, I believe they are implying in this post that an organized religious belief is comparable to hate speech. I would like to know, does this member represent the view of the entire committee, as it appears to be the case since they made this post on their official school committee page, where it remains to this day? Or is this their own religious bias based on personal interests or agenda? I would like to hear from each individual school committee member as to whether you agree with this statement or not. I would appreciate a response now, although I do know that you, Chairman Young, although you have the ability to allow them to answer, you typically require them to remain silent. And if this remains the case tonight, I will expect an email response so that each of your individual positions may be appropriately recorded. If you remain silent on this matter, I will consider that to mean that you agree with Mr. Farley's statement. Is it funny now?
Anybody else?
I'm here to stand with Liam tonight because I feel that the Middleborough School and the community and their actions are failing them. He is being made an example and marginalized for his beliefs. He is told that his shirt states, his shirt, that states his belief that there are only two genders is a disruption and violates the dress code that implies hate speech towards a protected class. This is a manipulation of the words on his shirt, and imply has no place in the dress code, nor should hate speech only apply to those in a protected class. Hate speech is hate speech, and it applies to everybody. You created rules that only apply to certain children while exempting others from being held to the same standard. As I've said before, creating policy that establishes two sets of rules is segregation. If you allow shirts that state a belief that there are many genders, then you must allow a shirt that states there are two genders. Neither indicates hate towards another group unless you twist it by implying or inferring something to further your agenda. Both statements are a statement of belief, of which conflicting can peacefully coexist. His First Amendment rights do not end at the school door, and his Fourteenth Amendment rights afford him equal protection under the law. Recognizing and honoring diversity is not demanding that one group's beliefs win over the others. It recognizes that our differences can be celebrated and peacefully coexist. One group should not be allowed to be loud and proud about their belief while the other group remains silent. Nothing on his shirt was vulgar, threatening, or profane. He did not act in a way that was threatening. If people felt unsafe, it was not because of Liam's words or actions but an incorrect inference. Children and adults need help understanding the difference between an actual threat that makes them unsafe and feeling offended that someone else dared challenge their belief. Does the cross around my neck apply hate to non-Christians who do not believe that Jesus is the Son of God? Does it make people who are Jewish feel unsafe? Who implies that? It's not me. I don't have hate in my heart, and I don't believe that it's okay for you to imply that this little boy has hate in his heart for anybody else. Superintendent Lyons, there are actual threats going on that are being ignored, disruptions in learning that are left unchecked. You are so busy taking action against a 12-year-old boy for words on his shirt that you have turned a blind eye to actual bullying, harassment, and sexual harassment that is occurring across this district. No effective disciplinary response has happened to prevent ongoing safety concerns from aggressors. The overarching message I keep hearing from this community is that you are concerned about the mental health and safety of children, but this is often in lockstep with the references to groups of one protected class. All children are at risk of bullying and harassment. All children are at risk of mental health struggles. All children are at risk for suicide and suicide ideation. And I have news for you, this is not a unique issue for the LGBTQ community. All parents have primary concerns about safety for their children.
Thank you. That's three minutes. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Melissa Odie Morrison. I am also a parent of a transgender child. When I tell you kids wear rock shirts, I've been also a teacher here for 14 years. I don't teach here anymore. And we were always very careful about what children would say, and it was always a thing about kindness, maybe being in kindergarten, but we always tried to teach them about being kind and careful to everyone. And yes, some things are gonna be, come out that may not be very nice, and we talk about it. But let me tell you about the gender thing. This is not about your kid being segregated because their shirt. This is about a parent and other parents who are afraid for their kid's lives. This is not a little, a little incident. And this is not the child who did it. There are parents behind this, and this is about their views and where they put them. I was afraid that day. I had to go to work, I had to get up at 6:00 a.m., go out on my front walk, and write a big sign that said, "Protect our transgender children." Do you know how it feels to go home and wonder if your fence is gonna be, you know, have something on it, hate on it, or your house, or you have to tell your child, "Keep your head down"? This is his choice, what he wanted to do. It wasn't my choice, but this is what my kid needed to do to feel like a human being who felt comfortable in his skin. And let me tell you, if this happened four or five years ago when my son was there, he was suicidal. His grades were so low, and we couldn't figure out, because he is smart as anything. Anybody who knows Zane, he is smart. And I couldn't figure out why. I could not figure out why. And if you think I wanted this path for him, hell no. It was awful, it's hard, it's tumultuous. All your friends who were your friends are not your friends anymore. Parents don't wanna be friends with you, that might be catchy. Those kids can't understand. It's hard for us to understand. How can you understand if you are not in that situation, or you don't have that? Imagine, and this is an awful comparison, but imagine you're in a wool sweater, and it's so itchy and you can't take it off, but you gotta wear it every day? You gotta go in the shower with it, you go everywhere you gotta go, you have to wear it, and you cannot stand that skin you're in. That is what it's like, but 10 times worse. According to my kid, I still don't get it. And I've had to do things that were so hard for me this whole time, all these things I've had to go through, all the things he's had to go through, and all these bills that are going on out right now, 118 out there right now against transgender children. And right now, if they pulled some of the things, my kid's in the middle of some of those things. And do I understand it? I still don't. It's very difficult. But what I do understand is I love my kid. I love my kid, I'll do anything for them, and even though it's not the kid who's in the problem.
That's your three minutes, Ms. Morrison. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Zagoras. I was up here a couple weeks ago, and I read a statement. I was asked to email that statement to the school committee. I understand you can't respond via email, but I was asked to be, to send in that statement, which I did, and the, there's no mention on the agenda tonight, so I would like it put on public record that I am asking for the bullying policy to be put on the agenda to be discussed.
It'll be on next week's, next meeting's agenda.
Okay. And I would also like for the emails that are part of that, the emails that you can send in anonymous, or you can send in, they're still not getting answered. So I would like to know who is in charge of those emails, and so those to be addressed so students can feel safe, and just an overall safety at the schools, from bullying to the safety at the elementary schools as far as the entrances, and getting that really addressed. And it just feels like another school year is gonna go by, and we're just kinda saying, "Well, it's the end of the year now, so we'll deal with it next year." And next year comes and nothing gets addressed. So it's long overdue, and things need to happen to now, not next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I thought long and hard about what I wanted to say. Been a member of this community for 25 years, and I've raised my children here, and I'm actually really emotional tonight because so much is going on in this, in this community that is just making me really sad. And I've raised my children to be good to everyone. I don't care who they are, if they're good to you, you be good to them, you show them kindness every day. I look on my left and I see Melissa, who's a friend, well, I call, I consider her a friend. I look to my right and I see others who I consider a friend. I love their kids for who they are. That, none of that matters to me. But what I hear and I see is that we're, we have all this talk, we talk about DEI task forces and pledges, and, but we're not doing the work, we're not having the conversations, we're not putting people together. There's people on that side of the room, and there's people on that side of the room, and no one is sitting in the middle willing to have a conversation. So my call to action to you, Superintendent Lyons, is to make that happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, oh, I see somebody coming down, so I'll give you a second. Go right ahead.
Hi, sorry, I came in late, I didn't mean to disrupt anything. I don't know if any of this was said, but I'm here to address everyone, superintendent, school committee, administration of all of our schools, the incident that everyone knows that occurred here with the boy with the shirt. It was really, a really, a great injustice, I think, and slightly maybe an abuse of power. I know that many people don't like the shirt that he wore, and I'm not really saying whether I think it was right or it was wrong or anything, but what I did wanna address is that we do have freedom of speech here, and that extends to all of our students as well. I don't believe that anything on the shirt explicitly said anything violent or incited any violence against anyone, suggested any hate. The sentence on the shirt stated what some people believe to be a factual statement, maybe even a scientific factual statement. Many people wear things that, on shirts all the time, that they believe to be factual statements. You know, "I believe in science," "Love is love," "My body, my choice," all sorts of things that can be considered very, what's the word I'm looking for? Debatable, if you will. I don't necessarily think that anything that was on that shirt was hate speech. I think that a lot of people's feelings on either side get really fired up over things like this, but just because he's a child doesn't mean that he doesn't have rights under the First Amendment like everybody else. You know, free speech is good for all of us, everyone, no matter what side of this you're on, and I really would like to see everybody's rights be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, I'm gonna move back to the committee. Does anyone, any member of the committee have anything they wish to bring up? Chris?
Yeah, I got a couple things. First, I just wanted to, just 'cause it's been a few weeks, I wanted to circle back to the, the safety audit and see what the progress is on that.
So where we are on the safety audit is still the vetting of the Galaxy Group I talked about before. And quite honestly, that's, that's where it sits right now. I'm in contact with them and trying to determine if they're the right group, and trying to get additional groups to consider if not that group, so that we have a couple to choose from.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Also, I spoke with Mass Hire this week, or actually it was last week, but they expressed how impressed they were. They did a tour of the MyLab, and they just reached out to me to say they're very excited about the Youth Works Program and what's happening in the MyLab, and they wanted to commend Tony Cupy and Josh Porter for their work, and so I, you know, just wanted to put that on record. And then, the only other thing I have, we've said, the bullying plan to be on the next agenda, I think that's extremely important to look at it, and just make sure staff is being trained and the policies are being followed, as it's almost a weekly occurrence where a frustrated parent reaches out to me with a sense of a lack of accountability on our part. So I, I really hope we can get that on next agenda.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else?
I just wanna bring up something today, this, this morning, the superintendent and I attended Mass Association of School Committees Day on the Hill, and one thing that should be noted that everyone's aware of, that's really important. We had a conversation with both the House Chair of Education and the Senate Chair of Education. So we're into May, the, the tax revenue for the state came out for end of April. The tax revenue was down $1.4 billion. April is the singular most important month of the year for tax revenue, because if you think about it, that's when people pay their taxes, right? That's a 31% decline from the previous year. So he is concerned about how it funds education. The governor submitted her bill, the House passed their bill for the budget. The Senate hasn't presented a budget yet. I believe the Senate's budget is due next week, and then what happens is they go to a joint committee after the Senate publishes, but the Senate side is relatively concerned about the money. I would also add to that, that the Senate tends to be much more conservative. Senator Rodriguez from Dartmouth is the Chair of the Budget Committee, so I just wanted to bring that up from a conversation that we were a part of today, so. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just to clarify with the potential impact of that, is that for the upcoming school budget that just got approved at the town?
So the school budget from the town is the school budget from the town, and as you can imagine, part of what happens with the town is the town base is, the town manager bases everything on projections that they see and revenue that he has, and money that's in the bank. I think the biggest thing becomes, we also base it on what we assume is gonna come from the state. If money is lessened from the state, then the town has to look and see if it has other ways to fund that, or it has to, at times, readjust. We've had to do that in the past, we've had special town meetings that have looked at readjustment for line items and stuff like that. I just raise it as a concern, because obviously it was a major concern today for both the Senate and the House side, and how the Senate and House, the House and governor chose to fund education. You could see things different, and it also pertains to grants and sources that come out, and so it is important, and so I just wanted to raise it here so people knew.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just a quick question on the bullying policy. When that's on the agenda next week, are we gonna allow community input on that?
Yeah, I mean, we always have, you know, as with all the agenda items, people can talk and have conversations, so yes, absolutely. Anybody else? Seeing Nate, Nate, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, so starting off with the, hello, okay. So starting off with the, the kindergarten has a field trip to the Zeitarian Theater Monday, May 8th. It is the first field trip in a few years, and they are super excited. They're planning something special for the pre-k. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and our PTA has been amazing at making it special for our staff, and I'd like to thank them for their creativity, generosity, and time. For the MKG, we have had four of the, of the six third-grade plays. We look forward to our final production next week, and they are confident that next week's play will be just as amazing as the last two. And next week, they'll finish up the math section of the MCAS test. They're excited about the MKG's PTA's Touch a Truck event this Saturday. This is a wonderful community event, and we look forward to seeing families from across Middleborough. Class pictures will be taken on May 17th. Our grade one and two families are invited to join on Friday, May 19th, for Camp Read-a-Lots. This is an event that our first and second grade staff puts together to promote the joy of reading through the camping theme. And for the HBB, it's been a busy week, and they're in the midst of MCAS testing right now, and last week. To get kids excited and ready, we hosted a really fun Math Spirit Week. The kids loved getting dressed up every day, but they especially loved the visits from Gigi the Penguin from ST Math. Last week, they also hosted the annual Family Art Night and had a great turnout. Kids and families had a blast making art in a variety of formats, and had a huge shout out to Mr. Donovan, oh, Ms. Donovan, sorry, and her team of volunteers for organizing this amazing event. The coming weeks promise to be lots of fun, as we have lots of events, plays, concerts, and field trips planned, and most importantly, the annual HBB Lip Dub. Now finally for the MHS, congratulations to the Yes Club for the outstanding job with the Cooler Middleborough Event that was held at MHS on Saturday. The programming and the collaboration with the numerous community stakeholders was awesome, so a job well done. Thank you to the members of the Student Council Executive Board who volunteered at the town meeting to serve as tellers for voting. Congratulations to the MHS Television Production Program for winning six 2023 New England Student Production Awards and earning five additional honorable mentions. Middleborough High, Middleborough High TV Production won more video awards than any other school in New England. A job well done to the music program for a wonderful Pops concert. It was a wonderful night. And then finally, thank you to Izzy Mosley, Lila Petty, and Faith Williams for representing our school at the Women in Sports and Athletics Leadership Day in Boston on Friday.
Any questions for Nate? Nate, thanks a lot, I know you have one more meeting left, so.
I know, only one.
The MEA co-presidents are not here tonight, they sent their, they couldn't attend. And with that, I'll turn over the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Young. I have a few items for this evening. The first is the announcement of a community forum to discuss the entry plan of findings in greater detail. This event will occur on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, here at the high school, and I'm going to ask that we break into two groups. It'll, all told, happen from 6:00 to 8:00, but from 6:00 to 7:00 will be the secondary level. If you're a parent, you can come to both sessions, of course, but we'll be focusing at secondary level from 6:00 to 7:00, and the elementary level from 7:00 to 8:00. This is an opportunity to meet with the entire executive committee, talk about the information that's been collected, and have input on the strategy that is, that is to come. So with that, I will call Principal Branigan up to talk about our high school class of 2023 Senior Week and final activities for this coming spring, very shortly.
Good evening, and it's exciting to be back with you as we told our seniors that three weeks from today is their final day, and they would be celebrating with their senior barbecue and the end of senior year. So I came back, I came to the committee months ago with really the proposed schedule that you so wonderfully approved, and so I'm just glad to just make sure that our community knows of the upcoming events. The week of, the 19th, excuse me, the week of the 15th of May really is the exciting time where the energy gets built in terms of the end of senior year. Friday, the 19th of May is our future signing day, and we encourage all of our seniors to take their place here in the auditorium for their picture of where they'll celebrate their next step of life as they start strong, whatever their next step will be. And those photos will be taken and then placed up on the second floor of the academic center outside of school counseling office, and we're looking forward to doing that. The week of the 22nd begins the final week of school with exams, and that is something that is an update from when I was here before, as we didn't know what color days we would be having at that time. So on Monday, the 22nd of May, will be the beginning of exams for seniors for Orange Day classes. It is a full day of school. On Tuesday, the 23rd of May, is a Black Day, and that will be exams on Blocks 3 and 4, and it is also a full day of school for seniors. On Wednesday, the 24th, is also a Black Day, as we will continue with the completion of exams. Seniors will have exams Blocks 1 and 2, and then they will be dismissed at 10:15 as it is a tradition. On Thursday, the 25th, will be a makeup day for seniors for exams or any other work they need to complete. There will be a senior class meeting, which allows for me to go over all of the events that are coming up, expectations as such, and then it'll be followed by the senior barbecue out here on the quad, as well as yearbook distribution. So we're excited for that day to come. On Friday, the 26th, is our Senior Memory Night that will take place at 7:00 p.m. That is a non-school day for the seniors. They will come to the high school at 7:00 o'clock. It's with great pleasure, and a thank you to the Satchin Pride Alumni Foundation for sponsoring this event with the ice cream truck from Plymouth Party that will be coming to serve ice cream to all the seniors. It's dinner, and obviously a memory night here in the auditorium of a montage of their history in Middleborough. We go into the major senior week on the week of, after Memorial Day weekend. We start with senior breakfast on the 30th, followed by graduation rehearsal, and we will start getting the seniors organized to graduate. And then, of course, that evening is the senior prom at Granite Links in Quincy. That event will start at 6:00 and end at 10:00. I had to make a correction, when I came to you months ago, I had the prom beginning at 5:00 p.m., and that was a mistake on my part. So the prom will go from 6:00 to 10:00 at Granite Links, and tickets will go on sale for the senior prom starting on May 15th. And all that information is inside Branigan's bulletin. On Wednesday, the 31st, is Scholarship Night, and that is an invite event only for those seniors who will be receiving a scholarship, and that those who are in the final stages of compiling all of the information from the sponsors and foundations and their awardees for this year. June 1st is Senior Last Assembly, it's followed with a graduate, before, with a graduation rehearsal, and then, of course, we'll distribute caps and gowns that day, and we're hoping that that will be the day that we'll have a really special event as the adopted senior program will come to completion that day. And I just wanna thank Teresa Farley and so many other members of the community who came together to really ensure that every member of the class of 2023 is adopted for this year, a tradition that started out of such a need back in 2020. Senior Last Assembly will take place that evening, starting at 6:00 in, here in the auditorium. Friday, June 2nd, is graduation rehearsal. This is the final main rehearsal before the students graduate, and then, of course, the wonderful tradition of the senior walk that will take place throughout all of our schools here in Middleborough, and that will begin at approximately 10:30, leaving here, and then making our way to all five schools in the district where the seniors will arrive back here to the high school. And lastly, the most important day is Saturday, June 3rd, which is the class of 2023 graduation exercises, with a 6:00 p.m. start out in the Middleborough High School Stadium. In the event of rain, we would be moving the event into the gym. Right now, that event is, there's no tickets anymore for the stadium, it's open seating, but students, seniors will receive tickets if, in the event, we go to a rain event, in which case it'll be set up very similar to the old high school, where graduation was in the gym and overflow was in the auditorium. So I can certainly take any questions that any of the committee may have, but I can tell, I can tell you that this particular senior class is incredibly special, they all are, but this one in particular, they were ninth graders coming in the door for an unbelievable experience, and boy, did they have an experience in the middle of grade nine. But this class stayed together, they've helped open a new high school, and they will be really sorely missed. So just exciting a few weeks ahead to be able to have the honor of celebrating this dynamic class.
Questions for Paul. So just a couple things for especially new school committee members. I, I meet with Marcia when I sign diplomas.
I meet with Marcia when I sign diplomas, and Marcia reminds me to send each of you a note if you're going to attend graduation, and Marcia makes you part of the graduation ceremony you'll hand out diplomas. It has always been, and Paul correct if I'm wrong, that school committee members are invited to the, sort of the, except for the prom, the other members of the piece, so you can be part of there and see and witness it. It's, for having had two children who went through this, it's a very exciting and fun week. Paul, one thing not on there that is not Senior Week, but if you could mention, is the photographs of seniors who are going into the military.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young. So part of that future signing day is where our students will take pictures for the next step, and we'll have all of our students who are committing to go into the armed forces to also sit and have their photo done as well. And if you have not been in the academic center yet, that started in the old building, we had a wall of honor where those seniors' photos are placed, and so their senior picture is, their picture from this future signing day is placed there. And then we always ask for them, when they have their photo taken after boot camp is all over, that we then replace that photo with their actual military photo, and it stays on that wall through their military service. So we started the honor wall in 2016, and it has been going ever since, so it will be something we will continue.
Thank you, Paul. Other questions for Paul?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Paul.
With that, I'll turn to the next item, which is the Reed's Collaborative Board of Directors under Chapter 40, Section 4E. As amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors for this collaborative have to be appointed annually. As part of my role, I serve as one of the members of the Board of Directors at Reed's, and it requires that this board vote to approve that appointment. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chairman Young.
So Chair, I entertain a motion to allow me to sign, to appoint Carolyn to the Board of Directors for the Reed Collaborative. Sorry, a second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, and so I'll sign this away.
Thank you. And with that, I'll turn to the last item of my report this evening, which is the new Grants Management Program. I've asked Ms. Sarah Hickey, our Business Manager, Director of Business and Finance, to present out on this new platform.
Thank you, Superintendent Lyons and school committee members. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, in keeping in alignment with advances in technology, are moving to a cloud-based grants management program. So this involves myself and Brianna Bernard, who is our grant specialist, doing a lot of training on the new platform. The new Grants Management Program will roll out in July, so our entitlement grants, our Title I, Title II, Title IV, and our IDEA grant will all be housed, for FY24, will all be housed in this new grant system. Brianna and I actually have to do a training on May 26th, and if we don't do that training, then we can't apply for the grants. It's, I can't imagine why we wouldn't do the training anyways, but we've been threatened, so of course we're going to do it. So the old Grants Management System is still going to be online for the life of the grant. So for example, our Title I grant, our FY23 Title I grant, has money left in it right now. We are going to roll over funds into a second year, and we can roll over funds into a third year from that grant. So the old Grants Management System may be, will be around through FY26. Hopefully, we'll have our grants spent and closed before that and move smoothly into the new system. Again, it's a, it's a new computer program. It's the same things for the grant, just it looks different on the computer.
Any questions for Sarah about the grants? Sarah, aside from being housed in a new place, how does it change the business office at all as far as the grants itself?
There are minor changes. The minor changes are with timelines for some of the things. So for example, grants can be amended, and in the old system, grants were amended the first through the 15th of a month, and then you draw down money from the, from the, from DESI, and drawdowns had to be done the 16th through the end of the month. With the new system, we can do amendments and drawdowns at any point in time, and so everything is going to be a little bit more real-time for us.
Does it make it easier for you to some extent? Is that the dream?
It makes it different, but it's still going to be the same process. We're going to get federal and state monies, and we're going to have reasons that we're going to spend the money, and the process will stay the same. We'll have some staff, we'll have some supplies, et cetera.
Okay.
I can't imagine that the fundamental purpose of grants would change in any way.
Any other questions?
I was going to ask, what was the, what was the reason for this change being made in the first place?
There, in my opinion, there's a couple of reasons. First of all, this, we're moving to a web-based program, so now the Department of Education doesn't have to maintain a server farm for all of the grant data. And the second reason is this is a Grants Management Program that is used widely throughout the country. So this, we're moving from Massachusetts Grants Management Program, which is a great program, to a grant program that's used by Tennessee, it's used in Kentucky, it's used by the, not just by education, but by all federal grants.
Does this allow you to have access to more grants in that way?
No. We still have, we'll still have access to all the grants we always have had access to.
Right.
And we'll still, with the addition of Brianna Bernard to the business office, one of the things that I have tasked her with is getting us certified in the business office so that we can actively seek federal grants. There are federal, and I know I mentioned federal grants for, that we have grants that we're entitled to, that the federal government gives the Department of Ed for us every year, but there are other grants that are out there at the federal level that are competitive, and within the next two years, we're going to start competing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, everyone.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you. MSBA high school building project, we actually haven't had a meeting, and the next meeting is Wednesday, so at the next meeting, I'll have better info for where we're at on that one. Just as a reminder, I sent everybody the list of school committee subcommittee assignments. So thank you to those who have sent me their note, what they're interested in. The others, just take a look at it. If there's any questions, just let me know, and we'll go from there. Next up is consent agenda. Chair, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
So move.
Sorry, a second. Discussion. All that's on consent agenda is the March 2nd meeting minutes and warrants. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We took care of the action item for an informational piece. The MEK Palooza is Friday, May 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Camp Amicus, so just reminding everybody that that's there. Just so everyone knows, originally, there had a potential to be a conflict with the next school committee meeting. That conflict doesn't exist, so we are going to meet the 18th. But with that, the chair would like to change our meetings for June. We generally meet the first and third. First is Senior Week, so we tend to avoid that. So with no one's objection, I would like to change that to the second and fourth week. And then for, it has always been our usual for the summertime to meet once a month, and if you follow it out that way, I think it makes sense to meet the third week in July and August, because that brings us to right before school, and then we'll be on the first and, third Thursday again, once school starts. So does anyone have any problems with all that? Again, moving the first and third in June to the second and fourth, that's the 9th and the 30th, and then for the summer months, we'll meet the third week. Obviously, if there's something else that comes up, I'll ask for a meeting from you all, but it's just how we have normally done summer vacation. I see no one objecting, so we'll, I'll just make that change and put it down. Okay? With that, that's all I have today. Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Sorry, a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a nice night.